I'd like to call the study session to order. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Whoops. My pen's out here. Commissioner Leitner?
Here.
Commissioner Walz?
Here.
Commissioner Rice?
Here.
Commissioner Duckham?
Here.
Commissioner Alexander?
Present.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Commissioner Palacek?
Here.
Commissioner Elwell?
Here.
Chairman Shatwell?
Here.
Eight present.
We've arrived at the first opportunity for public comment. If anyone would like to address the commission, please step forward and do so. You have five minutes.
Commissioners, my name's Brad Florrie. I'm a freelance newspaper reporter. I'm here today representing the Brooklyn Exponent, published in Columbia Township. I've talked with the publisher, Matt Schepler, about this, and we consulted, and he would like me to ask you to respectfully, on item four, we respectfully request that you both know on going into closed session to discuss Peter Bormo's lawsuit. As Mr. Cole told you six weeks ago, there are ten reasons, under the Open Meetings Act, to go into closed session. The one that comes closest to what you're going to do today is subsection C, which says you can go into closed session to consult with an attorney regarding trial or settlement strategy in connection with specific pending litigation. But, and this is the big point, but only if an open meeting would have a detrimental financial effect on the litigation or settlement position of the public body. Since Mr. Bormo's not asking for any money, that does not apply. There is no detrimental financial effect. Now, we know, the reason that you're going to do it, you can do it, to discuss a legal opinion. What we suggest is you don't have to do it. You can vote no. There's important principles here at stake, and I think that's one thing that everybody agrees on, and we don't see any reason why you can't discuss those principles openly. Thank you, and I hope you consider that.
Any other public comment?
Just wanted to let Mr. Florrie and the Commissioners know that in that lawsuit, I did request nominal damages.
Oh, then I'm wrong.
Seeing none, public comment is closed. I would entertain a motion, in accordance with MCL 15268, to discuss a legal opinion. I have a motion in support. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Leitner?
Yes.
Commissioner Walz?
Yes.
Commissioner Rice?
Yes.
Commissioner Duckham?
Yes.
Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Commissioner Palacek?
Yes.
Commissioner Elwell?
Yes.
Chairman Shatwell?
No.
So, are you adjourned?
Yes.
Motion to go back into session? A motion in support, all in favor? Those opposed? The Chair would like to make a motion to accept legal advice and file objections of the magistrate's ruling given in closed session. Do I have support? We have a motion in support. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Commissioner Walz?
Yes.
Commissioner Rice?
Yes.
Commissioner Duckham?
Yes.
Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Yes.
Commissioner Palacek?
Yes.
Commissioner Elwell?
Yes.
Commissioner Leitner?
Yes.
I believe, Mr. Overton?
Pat, if you'd step forward, and Denise, Denise, did you want to introduce Pat?
Sure.
We're going to have a discussion about the master plan.
I am so excited about starting this process, and I'm really excited about working with Pat and his crew when we went through this arduous process of having a wonderful opportunity to have eleven different companies put in their applications, and we pared that down to five, and chose Pat's company, JJR Smith, for a number of reasons, but anyway, Mr. Dowler is here, and he's here to answer any questions that any of you might have regarding the document that I did include in your paperwork. So, on that note, yay, we're ready to go. Right.
Thanks, Denise. Pat Doher, my firm, Smith Group, JJR, is very pleased to have the opportunity to continue our relationship and working on various initiatives with the county over the past many years. I think one of the things that's really important to say is, it's really exciting to me, from the perspective of being a resident of Jackson County, that we continue to recognize the assets that we have here, and we continuously look, as a board of leaders, at determining how we could best leverage those assets, as it relates to looking towards the future. So, as Denise had mentioned, you did put on a very competitive competition for looking at ways to improve the fairgrounds. I'm very pleased and excited about the opportunity to work with you and the Fair Board. And we established an approach that we think will really lead to success. I mean, I think it's important for us to understand that what we're really looking at here is to develop a master plan, something that creates a framework for the county to use as a roadmap for them to be able to determine the best economic value and the increased opportunities for revenue that the fairgrounds can achieve between now and in the next twenty to twenty-five years. What does that mean? I can't stand here and tell you what that means, because actually, my firm is here mostly as experts in the field of master planning, but specifically as facilitators, to look at what the county's expectations and the county's desires are from the stakeholders and the residents, and those of you that are leaders within this great county. So, just real quickly, the process that we put together, we think will take somewhere between six or eight months. It really depends on the Fair Board's expectations from a schedule standpoint, and it depends on you, as a board, on how we want to engage the board, along with the stakeholders. That's a little bit flexible, but we do know that there's a desire to get this done very quickly, and I can tell you that my firm, from a resource perspective, will not be what holds it up. It'll be the county, it'll be the residents, that will want to take the time to really understand what the opportunities are. I don't think that that's a negative thing. I think it's a good thing, because, you know, a piece of land that's been utilized for a specific use for over one hundred and sixty years needs the attention and needs the time to be able to figure out its best value for the future. So, we're going to start out with, you know, meeting with the Fair Board, which we're going to use as what we would call our study group, and that's really who we will work with on a fairly regular basis, no pun intended, to make sure that we're establishing a good framework for moving forward, making sure we're establishing a good schedule, and making sure that we're, more importantly, understanding who the important stakeholders are and how do we engage the community. So, we'll start out with a kickoff meeting with the Fair Board. We'll establish a schedule. We'll make sure that we fine-tune the approach to ensure that we're all on board with how we're going to move forward. We're going to set some dates for some public meetings, that we will want to have, some stakeholder and public engagements, and in this particular process, we've suggested two. One, right at the beginning, so that we can understand from those folks what their desires are, from a community standpoint, and the surrounding stakeholders, from their perspective, and plans that they may have, either from the county's perspective, the city's perspective, or private landowners, or business owners' perspectives, so that we can use that to kind of formulate how we approach. We don't want to just start doing a master plan without getting that initial feedback from the community. We're then going to be doing some inventory and analysis. We're going to be looking at some of the infrastructure, the circulation, how it works, how it doesn't work. We're going to look at some of the utility issues, specifically want to get a better understanding on electricity, and obviously, some of the municipal utilities, such as water, sanitary, just so that we can understand what the capacities, what the drawbacks are of those facilities, and what we can count on, or what we will need to include in some kind of an estimate as we move forward and understand the uses. We'll then have that first public meeting, and we'll gather the input, as I mentioned. We'll then establish what we call a framework, which we'll use for the basis of establishing some visionary, idea-generated opportunities for additional uses for the fairgrounds and all the lands that are within the fairground proper. We'll then have a second public engagement and stakeholder meeting, where we'll share these ideas and these visions and these framework ideas, get some feedback. In my experience in doing this for over thirty years is, you know, we'll probably come up with two, three ideas of what these, you know, ideas could be, but in the end, the plan is probably going to be a hybrid of all of these, and there'll be other ideas that come out of the engagement process, and ideas that come from you, as we start to stimulate the interest and conversation. So, that second workshop is really to kind of hone in on what are the types of uses, what are the types of opportunities, and how can we relate to the community? How does it relate to the city's master plan, is important, too? Making sure that there's an infrastructure component that is compatible. Also, as part of that, and really before we have that second workshop, we've actually added to our scope a little bit of a conversation with a market and economic expert that we've worked with from the East Coast on many projects, forward planning, and what we're planning on doing is giving them information, and they'll obviously be able to get ideas from the Internet, but give them information about the community, so that they can use that to help us generate markets and other opportunities. In the end, after that second workshop, the idea is that we would put together a plan, and that would then come with it, an implementation strategy, that would talk about how we could move the plan forward. It would also include some economics on cost estimates and phasing, and ideas on how those costs could be implemented over time. So, that, in a nutshell, is really the approach. I guess I'm here to entertain any questions that the Board of Commissioners may have.
Thank you, Pat, for that information. If I may go back just a step, prior to selecting this very competent firm, I would direct this question either to the Fair Director or the Fair Board Chair. There were eleven responses, eleven applicants, that you considered. Where did this firm fall in line, as far as the financial piece of it, in the bidding process?
She was looking at you. It's up to you.
Okay. Of the eleven, we didn't have a price when we interviewed, so we went down and we basically went through the eleven, picked the top five that we thought looked good, you know, qualifications were what we wanted, and then we did an interview process, and their interview was amazing, first of all, not only because they're from here, or Pat is anyways, but their presentation was amazing. But anyways, then it came down to, I think, the top two, Mike, is that right? Did we do two? And we asked for prices. And they both were higher than this fifty thousand, I'll tell you that. And through negotiations between Pat and Mike, we arrived at this fifty thousand dollar number. And really, the biggest thing that got us down here was community meetings. That, I mean, that takes a lot of money and a lot of people and a lot of effort, so that's really the thing that brought us down to the budget that we had requested that they stay within. And, you know, Pat's offering some services on his own, so that kept us in that fifty thousand dollar realm, but I think in the beginning, it was probably eighty-something is what the original bids were at.
If I may, just to add on to that, that's correct. I would also, I don't want to, how do I want to say this? I want to make, or kudos to Pat, I guess, because I know Pat, you know, has been a member of the community for a long time, been involved in very many projects around our community, and while his firm must be paid, Pat chose not to take a pay salary on this. So, he, in essence, is doing this gratis from his perspective. Obviously, there's a whole lot of other people involved that do get paid, but nonetheless, I just want to note that, and really, we do really appreciate that, to have a man of your caliber step up and do that and lead this project goes a long way. Thank you. Commissioner?
Just as a point of clarification, is this all set then, or does it go through committee into the full board? Okay. Thank you. If there are no other questions, thank you much. Have a good day. Our next speaker should be here at nine, so, in the meantime, Christopher, I think we'll skip and move on to you, and you can do your presentation, and then that way, when he arrives, he'll have a few moments to acclimate before he has to speak.
Okay. Good morning. Today, I just want to highlight some of the very interesting and positive things that we are doing between the two road agencies in Jackson and Calhoun Counties. As you know, we've been sharing a manager, but we've also been sharing and coordinating on a lot of other programs and issues, staffing and so forth. What we're doing is very unique statewide. To my knowledge, we are the only, of eighty-three counties, the only two counties working together to share a manager. I was part of an effort between Cass and St. Joseph Counties to collaborate with two road commissions, but we, of course, are two transportation road departments. And I have to say that I really like our model, and my key role is working with both administrators and all of you. It's working very well. So, today, I just want to give you an overview of what we're doing, and from here forward, I'm open to feedback, questions, and suggestions on how to do it better. So, basically, in a world of competing resources, we must endeavor to try new things. So, what I'm doing today is championing the cause and letting you know the many good things that are working well between the two agencies. Quick overview of what I'll discuss here in about a ten-minute presentation is organizational elements between the two agencies, how we work together to share purchasing, how we work together on administration, operations, engineering, project management, which is something new that we're doing, as well as some of the challenges and advantages in summary. So, first of all, organizational elements. As you know, we share a managing director. We also share some key staff members between the two organizations, more and more so over time. Purchasing, public outreach, the way we collaborate to do our websites, our social media, some of the educational programs that we're creating, and also now, more and more, information technology. We're trying to take advantage of GIS with mapping and gathering our data. Everything we do is geographically oriented and project-oriented, so when we get service requests on potholes, no complaints, we want to try to collaborate in ways to store that in map images, rather than just stacks of paper that we have to sift through. Clearly, then, we can see, if a lot of mailboxes are getting hit, for example, where are those happening? In an instant, on a pin map, you can see, oh, it's over here in this area. What's going on? And we can, as managers, make better decisions. And then GPS is something new that we have been exploring and getting bids on, where we want to be able to track our rolling assets, I call it. We have our buildings and our stockpiles of materials, but we have millions of dollars in equipment, and we want to know where it is at any given point in time, especially in the heat of the battle, so to speak, during a snowstorm, or any kind of event from Mother Nature, such as windstorms, where we're cleaning trees and so forth. So, I'm going to skip this slide, because it's generally items that I've already covered. Out of the organizational elements, we have three key arenas that I want you to keep in mind as I progress here. The administration circle, which is our finance, myself and other key individuals. We have our operations world, as well as our technical resources and engineering. And those three overlap into what I call a critical zone, and later on in my talk, I'm going to highlight more on the critical zone, where this overlapping occurs, because I believe that's an area that we need to improve on, and we've made some decisions to do that. So, let's cover, real quick, some of our successes in purchasing, which has been very, very successful in our partnership with Calhoun County. As you may or may not know, Calhoun County has a purchasing department, essentially, headed by Brad Wilcox, the deputy administrator. He's got twenty-some years-plus experience administering procurement and bids and so forth. So, here's a quick summary of all of our various projects and materials and programs that we've bid out. And here's an actual summary of bids, ranging for the last, basically, three-year period, two- to three-year period, and you can see a summary there of prices and the budget. We estimate that we have easily saved into the, well into the six figures, working together annually. So, just with economy of scale, the quality of our bids is much improved, because between the two agencies, we partner to make sure that the specifications are clear, and the qualifications that we expect are utmost quality for us. And then I included just a few samples of the actual bid submittals, just to show you how we rank and order the various submittals. And in some cases, we'll actually award to all bidders. For example, if we're buying aggregate, depending on where our project may be, we might want to buy from the northeast area, or the southwest area, and so forth. So, unless we see some anomaly in the pricing, we want to request authority from the Commissioners to purchase from the vendor with the greatest advantage for a particular project. And here's our actual bid for mineral aggregates, actually, from last year, and you'll be seeing some of these come forward in the next month or two. So, a little bit more about administration. You remember the three arenas. This is basically my role, highlighting as an example, where between the two agencies, you can see in this ideal scenario, the Venn diagram is two same-sized circles, Jackson County in green and Calhoun County in blue. I have dedicated services and duties required, where I put the hat on just for Jackson, or I put the hat on just for Calhoun, and I champion the cause for each agency. The magic of the shared arrangement is in the overlap, the general administrative duties. When I go to a conference, when I research a legal issue, when I'm dealing with a customer complaint here, and then I realize, we need to make the same change over in Calhoun. So, there's a lot of that overlap that is increasing over time. Those two circles are growing and merging more and more. So, ideally, everything is shared equally, all the time, but in actuality, we see this. We see some weeks, some days, some months, that are more heavily invested in Jackson, and then, as the next week goes, some more heavily invested in Calhoun. But all the while, that shared endeavor in the center is happening. So, my schedule does flex and move. I've tried to set a rigid schedule. It doesn't work very well, because it's not fair to make one agency wait when something is hot and has to be handled right away. But really, the beauty of the arrangement is, a lot of the success is due to mobile technology, and the ability to, we use iPads for FaceTiming, conference calls, video calls, when necessary, if something urgent comes up, to minimize travel time between the two agencies, and of course, email and telephone and all the usuals make this very workable. So, on the operational side, here I have some photographs of the glider kits that were recently approved, and I'll explain why that's part of our shared arrangement. We do share in chip sealing. Jackson does not own a chip spreader. We've actually used Calhoun's. So, when we share equipment, we actually rent it at state-established rates. There's a schedule sheet that's published, where they collect data from all eighty-three counties, and the cost of ownership is calculated. And so, for example, a dump truck with its blades and radio and everything loaded on it is around fifty dollars per hour. A chip spreader has its established rate, so when we're using Calhoun's chip spreader, we actually pay that hourly rate for the time that it's used. Now, Jackson actually owns a paver, so we rent that to Calhoun, and we're actually, you know, looking at the possibility of upgrading, because the paver we purchased is older and requires some significant work. So, you can see where one investment in one county can be easily shared and mirrored between the two. It's not necessary for both counties to own a chip spreader, or both counties to own a paver. So, it actually works very well. Shouldering. Calhoun used Jackson's shouldering machine, and we received revenue here in Jackson for that, which was great. Otherwise, frankly, that equipment is just sitting in the yard. So, it's all about scheduling, is what makes the magic work here. Trucking. This last year, we, the large live-bottom haulers, where we can get, you know, it's a belt-fed, what we call a flowboy, essentially. You can load them with much more material. So, I think Jackson took the lead last year. I think we're going to, again, to rent two of those for the season, because they're very hard to get just on the spot when you need them, so you've basically got to obligate yourself and have it. We basically took the lead, and then Calhoun used it as well in their projects, and again, we got reimbursed for the time. Otherwise, it is just sitting in our yard. So, again, a very good example. Equipment fabrication is something that we're looking more and more at, and here is one of our buildings that we have begun converting to a shop, basically, where we build those glider kits. And so, we're realizing some economic savings. Calhoun does not have a facility like this. So, the idea is to use our staff, potentially some of their staff, to work together on quote-unquote rainy days, to put trucks together. Ideally, in the future, we might do one per year, or two per year. Right now, we're in such need of equipment that we've bought, you know, four of those in one fell swoop, which is a lot to chew, frankly, for us, especially starting up a program like this. But this is a new idea that's just had its genesis here in the last couple, three months, and again, Calhoun does not have a facility, nor do they have the mechanical staff, but we have some great expertise with fabrication and with our crews. So, we're hoping to at least recruit one or two Calhoun folks to work with us. This is just a whiteboard of our fleet and facilities planning. You're going to hear more about equipment needs, here in Jackson, as well as Calhoun, but I don't intend for you to read it, but I just want to give you a sense of the tremendous amount of work and workshopping that's going on. I tend to pull together mechanics, as well as our administrative staff. I don't like to go in the closet and just come out with a magic solution. So, we're poking holes in a plan that potentially would propose borrowing some money to replace some of our equipment. Of course, everything hinges on May 5th and what happens there, so we can make some intelligent decisions. But one thing's for sure, is we're throwing good money after bad, taking care of our aging fleet. In the heat of a snowstorm, we will have oftentimes as many as seven or eight trucks down, and that's like a fire department not being able to send out its key equipment. It's just frankly not acceptable. And our mechanics, hats off to them, they're doing the very best they can, so there's no fault of theirs. Frankly, some of the trucks, the frames are just flat-out rusting. The rust jacking in the frames are falling apart. There's not a lot you can do. You basically lost a truck at that point. Let's talk about engineering for a moment. This is a key area that has a huge This is a key area that has a huge impact on our success. Everything we do is project-driven. Calhoun County has an engineering team, and the Jackson Department here has its own engineering team. And then you can see that I've drawn a bubble around it, what I would call a technical services group. I want to highlight that here in a moment. Grant programs that engineering works on are both federal and state. They do project designs, as you know, in-house, and then we handle construction inspection administration. Think of it as your insurance. When the roads are getting built, are they getting built properly? Is the asphalt of an acceptable quality? We are out on the grade, working overtime all summer long to check those things. Now traditionally, we've only investigated and inspected heavily on federal and state grant programs because it was mandated. Our new practice is going to be to look at local roads as well. Use those same principles to track and monitor quality whenever we're doing a subdivision road, because a road is a road is a road, and we need to monitor and watch that quality no matter where it's being built. I view our townships as critical customers, and they deserve the same quality as the state would get on its roads. Technical analysis and support, a variety of initiatives. I highlight here an image of a project scheduling tool that we're starting to use. I call it a master schedule matrix. And I think the key to this, if my pointer is showing up, yes, is these colored blocks. Basically, you have a column for each month of the year. So over here on the left, you have a list of all the projects that we're doing. This is a very compressed version. The actual list is like a scroll, you know, literally 100-plus projects and activities we're doing. So we're building for the first time an at-a-glance summary of our projects. There's a lot of data here. Who's in charge of the project? Who's paying for it? How many dollars are there? And I don't intend for you to read this, but I want to give you a high-level overview of what we're trying to develop so that if you ever call or you want information or Mike needs it, I can give him the schedule and he will know. This particular project, looking across, oh, look, the orange blocks are in July and August. That means our intent is to construct them. So in some of these, you'd see stragglers of light orange before or after. My philosophy is that Murphy's Law always kicks in. Projects don't go as planned, Mother Nature strikes, and delays happen, so we have to buffer ourselves through the process. Green would be grant application. You know, here we've got a grant application we're working on. Design would be heavy here in the blue, and then we slide right into hopefully if things go well, we're constructing, but definitely constructing here. And if things need delay, we've got an orange. This would be our public date, you know, basically where we tell the public that we'd be complete. If there are any red boxes, that's a drop dead. It must happen on that date. It's a deadline from the state. It's a deadline internally, commitment made to you. And here in this short sample, I don't have any of those red boxes. But one thing we will be doing is sitting down weekly or bi-weekly with staff and scrolling through this list. How are we doing? Are we on pace? Are we on target? So this is a key tool that we have not used in the past. So let's talk about project management being a hard, a critical part of what we do. This critical zone is now covered by what this lavender circle that I've created, which is basically project management. And if you recall, you met briefly Sean Cirque and Leslie Barnaby. An example of our shared relationship is that Sean is your Jackson liaison, your representative for our townships and villages. And in Calhoun, Leslie is the representative. They basically champion their respective counties, but they're going to have different strengths between them, so they're going to work together to complement each other. So within the world of engineering, we need some kind of a tie bar between the two groups to help manage quality and to make sure things are happening when promised and with high quality. So my general philosophy on project management is that poor project management leads to what I call death by a thousand cuts. When I scan through project after project, I've seen it in all kinds of organizations where I worked before especially. Every project, it seemed, was over budget, over schedule, deadlines were blown, various issues happened. So it really causes you to bleed over and over and over. You see that shortlist here shown. Imagine 100-plus, and every single one of them, we've lost a few thousand dollars or we didn't recoup full costs. So we're trying to prevent that. And my philosophy is that excellent project management, if you watch carefully, can lead to success by a thousand well-tended seeds. Just think of a cornfield. And I'm a farm kid. I detasselled corn and worked on a hog farm. So every single cornstalk planted through the season with fertilizer and rain and sunshine ultimately leads to a successful harvest. So if we shepherd these projects through carefully, we should minimize, there will always be those projects that go over, but we hope to minimize that risk for us. Project managers, both Sean and Leslie will also serve as customer service representatives or what I would call stakeholder stewards. So when any particular township has concerns, issues, speeds, some of the things that you're emailing me, I am now shepherding to the project manager to help make sure we get back to you, make sure that the issue doesn't get lost in the shuffle. We're literally creating three-ring binders for every township now where we track carefully, and we have tickler files and follow-up notes. Our responsiveness is extremely important, and we want to make sure things don't get lost in the shuffle. So we view that our customers are internal and external. Clearly, we have departments in the county that we're serving. The former road commission might have partnered, might not have, but as now a county department, we are very integrated with the county. So we want to make sure we track those customer needs as well. So I've already talked about the master project schedule here where the project manager will be the bird dog, so to speak, and kind of watch and keep the plate spinning. But when things go crazy and a red box is being blown or something is not fitting with what we all agree on, then I will be pulled in and alerted, and we will figure out a plan of action. And that might include, you know, more of a bulldog philosophy where we've really got to hunker down and figure out a solution. So last thing I have is some challenges and some of the things that I want you to be aware of as we move forward. With our shared resources, I always want you to be aware of the fluctuations in time and energy for me and/or staff. Right now, Sean, for example, is literally over in Calhoun County, helping them prepare for some of their construction season cost estimates. That's his strength. Leslie's new, and she's still learning how to do those estimates, but he is teaching her. So as that wanes over the next couple, three weeks, he'll be stronger back in Jackson. He's already gotten, got a lot of our projects through the chute. You know, most of the townships have requested, and he already has them done. So his schedule kind of opened up to allow this. For every hour of his time, bear in mind that he is being billed, or Calhoun is being billed for that, not only his wage, but his fringe benefits and the overhead for that. So we get full recoupment of those costs, which really helps both agencies. So on that note, just using Sean as an example, if we just shift to mathematics in just a light form, just looking at this visual of the cosine function, peaks and valleys. Really, really busy? Okay, I can breathe. Really, really busy? Resource allocation is critical. We don't have the staff we used to where we had a lot of breathing time. So what we have to do is work together with our limited staffs between the two agencies to balance. So if Jackson was the blue curve, we have to offset the peaks and valleys and workload with those engineering folks and hopefully align where a peak in one agency doesn't conflict with a peak in our agency, for example. So timing and planning are more and more critical. I don't think that's a secret. And if we do it carefully though, I hope to achieve some synergy where we've done something here, it's already happened, where Sean has developed a way to do his estimates that's quick and easy. He's over in Calhoun, just peeling it off, doing it, working hard. It doesn't have to be redeveloped. The wheel is already invented, so to speak. So one plus one can be greater than two. So some high priority goals as we move forward, and I'm open to feedback. Administrative housekeeping and reporting. I'm big in performance monitoring, and I want to create some dashboard metrics for us all, as well as posting those on the web per new statutory requirements. Project and program management are critical. Performance monitoring is critical. And our workplace culture, as you know, we're working hard to improve. Capital improvement plans are critical, and at the end here, I have a fleeting kind of review of something we're going to be doing with all 19 of our townships with capital planning for the next three to five years. They are starved for information. They need to know how bad their roads are and what will it cost. And overview, how bad is it? They don't have that today, but they need that. And when I say capital improvement plans, it's not only roads and bridges, but it's also our internal needs between fleets and facilities. We're blessed with a beautiful building and great facilities, all bought and paid for, but it is aging. It needs some maintenance in key areas. And then our fleet is, of course, it's not an uncommon problem right now. In time, when times are tight, you defer your expenditures on new equipment. So we have done that, and we're starting to unfortunately have to pay the piper. And customer service, a huge initiative of ours to the public, to townships, school districts. We've had outreach meetings with superintendents as well as our transportation directors and tried to improve our collaboration with them, county departments as well, and other stakeholders. So keys to success, carefully assess and allocate our resources, leverage technology. Step-by-step, we're doing that. Continue to develop our people. Identify and address compelling issues as they come up and follow the wishes of our leaders, all of you. So it's my job to help educate and share what we're doing, why we're doing it, and I'm definitely open to feedback. So real quick, if I could just show you, this is an example of something that I piloted in St. Joseph County before in my work. This was done in May of 2014. And this is Mottville Township down in the very southwest corner of St. Joseph County. And we picked them because they basically were, had a system of roads that we had recently raided. So what we, this is a presentation that we give to the township supervisors essentially, or supervisor and the board. We explain goals and objectives of the capital improvement plan, the steps involved in the plan development, where we compile existing data. We do visual road inspections, like literally drive every road and take a look at what those roads need. And then we create maps and exhibits, not just a chart, not just a table, but actual exhibits with color that at a glance shows what needs to be done. And then we work with them to develop an action plan because the price tag is hefty. It'd be millions for every single township. That's not practical. So you have to boil it down to the ABCs of what can be done, how much money do you have, and then decide. Because one of the principles frankly is that once a road is to a certain point, and we rate them on a 1 to 10 scale, 10 being new, the very next year it's a nine, once it drops below a five and gets to four or three, it's time to stop throwing good money after bad. Sad to say, but it's true. You can't chip seal a road and really do anything. You can try, you can try to patch it together, but you want to capture that five, six, seven and save those roads to the best of your ability. Yes, Carl?
Chris, speaking to that, I know it's been several years since our local roads have been, have had Pacer ratings done on them. And I know it's a huge task. Do you have any idea when our local roads are going to be assessed as far as a Pacer rating? Because I suspect from the last time to now, it's going to be quite a huge difference.
And before you answer that, if I may follow up on, I had a similar question, Commissioner Rice, in regard to Region Two, correct? Board members of Region Two planning that have been active for many years, they have the rating system in place and done. So are we collaborating at all with them? Am I correct, Commissioner Rice? Because I know you've served on that for quite some time.
Correct.
So my question would be, are we working in conjunction with them so that we're not, again, reinventing the wheel?
Short answer is yes, absolutely. And you are correct, local road data is hard to find. And frankly, it's not required to rate them. We have to do our primaries and our trunk lines and state roads, but local roads are optional at this point. And you have to be certified, so you can't just send out any person, and you have to do it under certain weather conditions. So you can't do it, you know, after it's rained, for example, when you can really see, if you've noticed after rain, it amplifies the appearance of cracks and so forth. So there's a lot of criteria, and now again, certification is required, so you have to send them to classes and so forth. We are looking with our engineering team to bolster our ability to do this work in-house to stay on a program where we're rating our local roads as well as our primaries on a two, maybe a three-year cycle at most, but a two-to-three-year rotation as well as traffic counts. Because sometimes when a grant program comes through and you're looking at, well, where could we use this grant? We want to pull up one of those maps with all that magical information, and I'll show you a couple of samples here in a minute. And boom, you can see clearly what the critical needs are. We are indeed partnering with Region Two, and we hope to do more of that. Everybody's competing with limited staffing though, but we are open to that contracting, and they do a very good job at a reasonable cost, actually. So yes. Did I answer your question, Commissioner Rice?
Yes, thank you.
Great, thank you. So real quick, I don't want to belabor the point, but we give them a summary of their roads, asphalt portion in a pie graph, you know, we basically just tell them what they have. Then we show them their actual national functional class map, red being county primaries, blue being county locals. And of course, from a township perspective, they only need to be worrying about their blue roads, which is all subdivisions and all roads that are not designated as a county primary. Under statutes, we are responsible for the county primaries as an agency entirely. And once in a while, you'll get townships that'll contribute to improving the primary, but it's not often done. So this clarifies what roads are really in their responsibility and jurisdiction versus ours. And here are the famous Pacer ratings shown with red being failed and green with blue kind of in the middle. So you'd like to see a trend over time where you've got the more friendly green and blue colors. But as has happened, if you took a bunch of those maps and flipped them quickly, you'd see the degradation down to the yellow, orange, and red. So we set up these handy graphs too, that basically, I just want to highlight this particular graph. So if you take the miles of roads on the left, and then you put the 1 through 10 ratings, if all roads were new, you'd be stacked over here at 10. And then over time, you'd kind of see the staggering happen, right? You'd kind of move leftward. So what happens here is you can see they're spread with a lot of threes, a lot of fours. This gives you at a glance, how bad are your roads? And then the next year, you'd probably see the bars shift. And of course, based on Commissioner Rice's question, you have to have current data. And in St. Joe County, we had gotten on a program where we were doing it every two years. So we had recent data, and we could show improvement in performance metrics. So here are the primary roads, same kind of graph, and then you can do it for all the roads, kind of stacked with the colors to differentiate the two. So again, teaching the township boards how to read those graphs and how to use them to help gauge the health of their road system. And then this is the drive-by of all roads where we literally get in the vehicle with trained individuals. Leslie and Sean would be doing most of this work. And literally look at the roads and one by one, not just sit in the office and look at data where the road is rated as a five. You can't decide how you would fix it there. If you go, if you go look at it though, certain areas may need patched, certain areas might need an overlay. We basically derive a fix. And then we create a map that shows in color coding whether it's an overlay, this is red here, a crack seal which would be in blue. And there are just rules of thumb. I'm going to skip here to this years of life. If you're ever wondering, right here is your magic. HMA overlay, 10-year life is about what you can expect. The cost per mile, which we use for planning purposes, is about $150,000. That includes all project costs. It is a little loaded with contingency because we don't know what inflation's going to do and so forth. Today, if we paved a road with, as an HMA overlay, it might be about $100,000 to $110,000 per mile. But we've always got tree trimming, line painting, culverts to do, so we pump it up a little bit so we're safe with a, with a planning number. So that's $15,000 per year that they need to be tucking away for every paved road if they were truly going to have a sinking fund. Then you look at wedging, which is basically when you're driving down a road and your shoulder's sloughing off and so forth, you've got to kind of patch in before you can actually do any kind of work or overlay. Cost of that is between $50,000 and $75,000 per mile, a 10-year life for that work. Then we have spray patching, crack sealing, more just two-year lives, chip seal, six-year life. You're technically supposed to chip seal every asphalt road every five to six years. And the cost per mile down in St. Joe County was between $18,000 and $20,000. Actually, here in our area, because of the cost of aggregate being a little higher, it's closer to $30,000. So all these costs are regional, so keep that in mind. A regravel, we get a lot of questions on gravelling roads. 10-year life, you should be gravelling a road every 10 years, putting three inches down. So HMA patching and then pulverizing. If you were to pulverize a road, reshape it, and then pave it, just the pulverizing is about $50,000 per mile. So this gives the township, we use that information to actually, if I can back up a slide, there we go. If you look here at, I've got three charts. One is for the primary roads, that's our information, but we share it with them. Then the local roads, that's basically looking at their system. You can see here in this particular scenario, Mottville Township was going to have to, if they really wanted their roads great, like within the next season, if they could find $1.3 million, we could fix everything that was on that visual inspection map shown here as just a Keystone image. So that's not doable for them, clearly. But then we take that information and we come up with a plan of action that works for them. And that's where we can shine, I think, as a technical resource group because we are the... the, the primary advocate for them. And 38 townships between the two counties to work with, our engineering team is mighty busy. Thank you.
Questions, Commissioners? Certainly. Any others? Yes?
Administrator Overton, I think my question is more direct to you instead of Christopher, but as you recall, two years ago, when the collaborative effort with management team was introduced, off the top of my head, it seems like the number that we were told, the estimated number, was $300,000 that would be saved with that. I'm just asking that when financial information is presented, and the next J dot, whenever that is, through personnel and finance, or at whatever point in time that would be most appropriate, that we have some actual dollar numbers. Christopher did a very nice job of expressing, excuse me, with sharing the significant savings in supply purchases and such, but I'd be specifically interested in that one number.
We don't, no, we're closing out 2014, and we'll be able to get a comparison. And of course, we're only two years in, three years in.
Two.
Yeah, so it's very early.
Yep.
I can tell you that a lot of the savings are difficult to gauge, to be honest. They're qualitative, they're subjective. Sharing a great person over here who has expertise, come over and help us. So to actually do this exercise requires, you know, a bubble of time where you think, okay, now if I had to hire that person and I needed that many hours, what would that cost us to get that same level of service or through a consultant? So there's always going to be a range of minimum, maximum with every single item. But we can do it, I have done it before with prior analysis, so it is my goal to do that and present it to you.
Well, and I think especially since we're leading the way amongst the state of all 83 counties, to say we're the only two counties doing this, I think we're setting an example, and to have that data would be valuable for other communities.
I agree. And I'm very excited to actually help us shine and demonstrate success. I'm driven to make that happen.
Thank you.
Thank you. A lot of assumptions, we'll just have to put in the footnotes so that we all understand what was assumed.
No, I just want to say, Chris, as far as your project managers, certainly from my perspective, that was an excellent idea for a lot of reasons. So I really appreciate you implementing that.
It's not often done, by the way, so some managers from fellow agencies might crinkle eyebrows, why are you doing that kind of thing? But with two shared entities and a different skillset between Leslie and Sean, Sean's a more technical boots-on-the-ground kind of guy with 30 years with our agency, and six, seven years now in engineering, moved his way up the ground, understands operator's perspectives. Leslie's more people-oriented, customer service, presentation, public outreach-minded. So I think they complement each other very well, and they're going to continue to learn from each other in the future. So, thank you.
Thank you, Christopher.
Thank you all, appreciate the time.
All right. Next up, we have Mark Notley, he's here to discuss our salary and wage proposal.
Mike, you want a motion to receive this? So moved. There is a mo, yeah, yeah. Aye.
Thank you, sir. Are we all ready? Good morning to all of you, it's a pleasure to see all of you. You issued a request for proposals for a classification and compensation study, and we sent a proposal. And Mike received that proposal, I had a chance to meet with him. He wanted me to come here and discuss the proposal in some depth, give you a sense of who you would be working with if indeed you went forward with that project, a little bit about our firm, our understanding of what your needs are, our approach to filling those needs, and also some information on what the final product would look like and what value it would be to the county. I wasn't sure what level of technology that you had, so I put my presentation in a booklet for you. And I hate to take you back to the dark ages, but so be it. I'll talk my way through this presentation. If you care to, you can follow along page by page. It's probably not necessary if, if you prefer just to listen. And if you have questions, ask those questions when they arise, or certainly at the end of the presentation. I'll be, I'll be pleased to answer any questions that you might have. Just to open on page one, a little bit about who I am and who we are, and if we were to work with you, who would be working with you. I'm a municipal consultant, I've been one for about 28 years now. I started with various public accounting firms, Price Waterhouse and Plant Moran, and moved on down the street here to Raymond Robson during about a decade ago. I'm not an auditor, all of those firms have consulting divisions, and that was my job to work on that side. I have a master's degree in public administration, excuse me, public administration actually, and a national certification in human resources. So I'm not an auditor, although I've worked with those firms in the past. In 2009, I decided to start my own firm, and there was another company out there, Bill Rye and Associates, that I merged with. Bill Rye was very active in doing classification and compensation studies for counties. In fact, he did Jackson County's last study, the one that you currently utilize for your, for your compensation system. Collectively, between the two of us, we've done about 300 classification and compensation studies. Also, a lot of 312 arbitration, benefits analysis, all of the things you would expect from a classification and compensation consultant. Bill is now retired, although I pull him out of retirement for projects, he's doing one for Midland County right now. And if we work with you, Bill will be more in an advisory capacity, I will be your consultant. Bill has a lot of institutional knowledge about how Jackson County was structured in the past when he did the current compensation system, and that can be valuable as you go through the process. Of course, we have supporting technical staff, people who have human resources and also accounting backgrounds, so we can get assistance with tabulating surveys, providing you with cost analysis of various options on implementing a compensation plan, those sorts of things. Bottom line on this, this page one is simply that I would be your primary consultant for doing this project. On page two, that's illustrated in terms of respective roles. My presumption is that Mike Overton would be your project manager, but certainly the commission could choose anyone they, they wanted for that role. And that's who I would reporting, be reporting to and also interacting with. Page three, just a little bit on your needs as we perceive those needs. All of these classification compensation systems in county government tend to last about 10 years. Each county has one, we've done about two-thirds of those across the state of Michigan. Over time, what you see is that jobs change, the organization changes, people take on additional duties, there tends to be a divergence of your pay ranges from what is actually going on in the labor market. All of those kinds of things tend to wear a system out. As I mentioned, usually about 10 years is what we're looking at, and it's time to replace it. You've gotten more than 10 years out of your system, and what typically happens when it starts to break down is that you get inequities in both the grade structure as well as the pay ranges, and that makes employees very happy. From the board's perspective, it makes it harder for you to look at compensation rationally, to have the information that you need to make informed decisions about pay range increases, about pay increases generally, about individual requests. A new system allows you to have essentially current, accurate information, both on where people should be relative to their peers in the organization, as well as where they should be relative to the labor market. Essentially, it's your foundation on your human resources system. And as I mentioned, two things come into play in terms of internal equity. People are now, and their jobs are slotted in different areas of your grade structure. As it weakens and things change over time, it gets, it gets to be a situation where people oftentimes complain, and sometimes rightfully so, that they're not paid equitably to the people that they work around. As I mentioned, similarly, page, excuse me, wage parity becomes an issue, how you stack up relative to the, to the competitive labor market. So all of those things get addressed in this type of study. Lastly, your request for proposal, which is fairly common with what we see, asks for a look at employee benefits. What we do with employee benefits when we do this type of study is survey other counties related to things like longevity pay, time off, retirement systems, the types of co-pay and co-insurance that employees have to pay for everything from health insurance down to retirement, to provide you with that broader perspective on total compensation. Sometimes you can see where an organization has their salaries potentially lower than the labor market. And if you look at the total picture of compensation, you might see that that's where they should be, because their benefits are higher. What we try to do is give you the whole picture of compensation in doing this study. We develop the pay grade structure based on market salaries. We then include a section in the report on employee benefits. So we try to give you both pieces or facets of the puzzle, so that you can get a complete list, look at compensation. In regard to your needs, what's really important at this is that the system, when it's developed, be turnkey, it's something that you can implement. A lot of studies, and I'm sure you've seen studies of this type, end up on the shelf just simply collecting dust. What we try to do is work very diligently to make sure that any reports that we develop get implemented. What we try to do, and what I try to do explicitly, is to develop the report and the whole process as a system, rather than just a standalone study, to assure that you have the tools necessary, and in this case, for several of your bargaining units, to implement the system.
I have a question, Mr. Notley.
Sure.
You talked about, we rank the compensation statewide, and we rank the benefit, the employee benefits also statewide, is our report that pulls the two together?
Yeah, it, it'll pull the two together in treating them separately. If you're talking about a benefit costing, of actually taking the cost of a base wage versus the cost of the benefit and combining the two.
Correct.
It's very difficult to do and very expensive, because what we end up, we'll pull back information for you, for example, on healthcare coverages, what the county's cost is for a family plan as opposed to a single coverage plan, what the premium cost sharing is for the employee. But in terms of costing it, what you end up with is the whole question of what do you get for your dollars? If you go through each one of the benefits and try to assign a cost, you come up with something that doesn't provide you with a very accurate total number. We do it sometimes with a cost allocation, but in doing a pay grade structure, we tend to present it separately.
Yeah, I find, I deal with younger employees, and they typically tend to overlook the benefit package.
Yeah.
And only see the dollars that, we go home every Friday afternoon.
Well, what we end up giving you is a laundry list of about, and I was going to talk about that in a minute, but I'll be glad to now, probably about 40 different benefit items. And pull back information on each one of those. For example, how much vacation time, how much holiday time, how much PTL, what are the banks that, bank limits, what is the payout at retirement? Those are things that you really can't cost. Going on down the list, longevity, we pull back, you could cost. The various features of healthcare, just an overview on dental coverage, short and long-term disability, retiree healthcare, which is virtually impossible to cost, because we're looking at a future liability. Retirement systems, some will have DC plans, some will have defined benefit plans. And trying to get a comparative cost for those two things, you're going to, you're going to run into issues, because it really isn't one. But what we can do is take all of those various benefits, lay them out in a raid in a spreadsheet, so that you can read across and, and see what everyone has. Secondly, what we do in a report is put together a narrative explanation of what everyone has, essentially benefit section by benefit section, and in a summary of where we see you being high and where we see you, see you being low. So.
Mark, if I may chime in a bit, when you, when you, would you define cost? Because as you just described, you know, you spread a spreadsheet, and it shows what the benefit is, and shows what the cost is, but yet you said we can't do it. So could you define what you mean when you say you really can't cost it out? I mean, I think that's a little lost on.
Yeah, and what I was referring to, and I think Phil and I were kind of having our own little dialogue on that, but I mentioned retirement, for example. We might have one county that has a defined contribution plan. And let's say that that county contributes 12% into the employee's, employee's account, and that's the employer's contribution, forgetting about what the employee contributes. We have another county that has a defined benefit plan. It's virtually impossible to cost the value of a defined benefit versus a defined contribution plan. Add another level of complexity to it, most of the counties now that have DB plans also have a DC plan for new hires. So now we've got a whole nother variable to work with here. What are we costing, the old one for the old employees, or the new one for a new hire? This goes on down the line, retiree healthcare. How do you cost retiree healthcare when someone hasn't retired yet? You can look at the, the current cost of providing that benefit, but there's so many variables in terms of service levels that you have to throw into the equation, that you end up with final results that would probably have more debatable variables than anything else. Now, we can do it, but it adds an awful lot of, of consultant time and in turn expense to the process.
And potentially needless detail. I mean, we're looking at.
Yeah, I, I think detail that would be debated as to the credibility of it, and I've done it plenty of times. Of all the counties that I've done this study that we're proposing for, no one has ever taken that. taken that approach.
If I may just elaborate, you know, when you're talking about like a defined benefit plan, you know, twelve percent, on the face of it, you go, well, okay, there it is. This cost is twelve percent to the county. Another county might be ten percent. Well, on the face of it, you go, well, there's the cost right there, guys. But yet, what are they getting for the ten and twelve percent? You start trying to define it more, you're breaking it down into what, it's almost impossible to break it down to the benefit level itself of each of those plans.
Yeah, exactly. What we try to give you is something that, first off, points out where the disparities are, if disparities exist. Secondly, you can investigate it further, if you really had that interest. And third, it provides you, I think, with a target where if you wanted to enhance the benefit, or if you see that as a potential, based on the benchmarks, of an area that you should be looking to reduce and maybe join the mainstream, it gives you that indication. A lot of what I find in doing these benefit surveys is, as I just mentioned briefly, we have two-tiered approaches now. And I don't know how many you have or don't have, but a lot of the counties have gone to, for everything from longevity down to retirement, retiree healthcare, everything else, of cutting those benefits for newer hires, and reducing costs in that way, keeping the old tier, much like the automakers do, for the existing employees. That, I think, is the most significant area to be looking at in benefits as you review this type of data. Have we taken that approach? Have others gone further and faster than we have? What is our financial condition? Is this something we should be looking at, just in terms of reducing our future liabilities? So all of those kinds of questions will come out of what is included in a benefit summary. Some of them will be addressed through a narrative that I put in the report. The costing aspect, which I probably just talked about too much, is not that definitive piece that certainly anybody with a financial mind, or a mind that likes resolute answers would look for.
I've got to leave in a few minutes, so I'll throw this totally new question out, maybe for Mike as well, not a stranger to it. But some time ago, the commissioners will remember, we talked about compensation for elected officials, and the need to do something with that before the next election, because they were jacked and out of position. Is that contemplated in this at all, or not? Sorry to put you on the spot.
Yeah, actually, I can't say that we've actually discussed it like that. I mean, we were talking about classifications. I mean, what's normal, Mark? Have you done those?
Well, I just finished Livingston County, and we did that.
You did, okay.
For the elected and their chief deputies, both?
The elected and their chief...
One, the sheriff and undersheriff.
Right.
Oh, the administrative elected officials.
Yeah.
Fairly common, yes.
Fairly common, that would be something we would pursue as well.
In Livingston case, Livingston wanted to look at the Board of Commissioners, the vice chair and the chairman.
Yeah, I'm not talking about us at all, to be clear.
Good.
Again, we had some issues two years ago with, well, specifically without name attached, the undersheriff making more than the sheriff. And it's an uncomfortable position to be in, and we talked then about the wisdom of doing something before the next election to get things back in line, and for us to have a policy then on how the pay should increase after that point. And me personally, just as one commissioner, I'd like to see that addressed at the same time we're looking at this, I think makes the most sense to me.
Yeah, I would agree. One, this will be timely enough, and two, it's always nice to have a third-party expert, that way there's not, you know, well, this person or that person, you know, doesn't like me or what have you. That's one of the advantages of having someone like Mark. He's not only an expert, he really has none of the, I don't dare I say baggage, but he has no relationship with anyone here, which is nice.
Typically, you don't include the administrative elected officials in a grade structure and present it separately. That gives you the separate section of the report and the information that you would need to evaluate those salary levels. The pay compression thing for the undersheriff isn't uncommon either. It's a shame, but...
Yeah, and that was our own fault, I think, just by letting, well, it's our fault. Let's put it that way. And I would think it would be separate, I agree, that that's the best way to do it.
Quickly, page four. Why would you use us for the project? This is just my self-promotion page. We do most of the county government, the pay systems, either Bill and I have done virtually, I think, two-thirds, three-quarters, I'm not sure, but an awful lot of them. Our techniques, our methodologies are geared toward county government. The pay plan, for example, is weighted, and I'll explain the job evaluation plan in a minute, but it's weighted for county government. We know all of these positions, we've certainly done them often enough, and our reputation is important to us, so we don't take shortcuts in doing this type of project. Someone else is going to be calling Mike at the end of the project, asking for a referral, just as I'm sure Mike called a couple of the ones that I included in the proposal. And we want to make sure that we have some continuity and some future in this business. So if you do use us for this project, you will get a very thorough, very good report. And as I mentioned, something that can be implemented. We're close. I was in Ann Arbor for many years, and most of the years that we've had this business, and recently moved it to Brighton, but we're still very close to you. And that's important. We're not in California, we're not in Florida, and if you have problems with implementation, or a year from now you have a position that's difficult to reclassify, we're there, and a lot of times without additional cost. So the, long and short of it is, we have, we're a small company, we have lower overhead rates than a lot of the larger firms, although we've both worked for the larger firms, and at least in my humble estimation, of most of our clients, you get more bang for the buck. Project approaches on page five, four different phases here that, and I think this is important, to give you a sense of what we will actually do and what you can anticipate getting out of this. This can be simplified very easily, and I try to conceptualize it with four different phases. The first phase is just getting to know people's jobs, and if you don't understand all of the jobs in the organization, you can't do this study. I know plenty of people try to do this study by cutting corners on this, but you can't do it and do it right. You're going to end up with more problems than you started with. Phase two is the labor market. Once you understand the jobs, you know what to go look for, both in terms of the scope of the labor markets, how many do we need? Do we need a local market? Do we need a county, Michigan county market? As well as the actual positions to describe them, to make sure you're bringing back an orange and an orange, and not just working with titles. Phase three is putting together the pay grade structure, and this is really the centerpiece of this whole project. If you were a financial person, this is your balance sheet. This is what comes out of this in terms of where we stand right now, both in terms of internal equity, where should everybody be relative to everybody else in the organization, and what should their pay ranges be. Phase four is implementation. I'm not presumptuous enough to tell you how to implement, but we can provide a lot of the tools and the cost analysis to allow you to do it in a rational and informed way. So page six is looking at individual tasks, and page six deals with phase one, as I referred to it, getting to know everyone's job, as well as the organization. And as you look at these tasks, we start out with meetings, we collect a lot of information on what's currently in place, the job descriptions, the current pay grade structure, the benefits, schedules, the collective bargaining agreements, anything that's going to tell me precisely what's going on here, because if I don't know what's in place, I can't do very much. We start off in task three internally with an employee orientation, actually a series of them, because we have so many people. It's important that employees be involved in this process. And I don't say that because I'm horribly touchy-feely. I say that because if you get to the end and you haven't included them, and you haven't heard what they have to say, they're not going to be happy. Then we run into morale issues. The other thing in regard to employees is, a lot of times, there are duties that they've picked up that aren't represented in job descriptions. So, and sometimes they're very important, sometimes not so much. But it's a matter of sitting down with folks and explaining what this process is all about, taking any fears of the process out, and then allowing them to fill out a job questionnaire to tell me precisely what they do. So in task three, the last thing that's going to happen at an orientation meeting is they're going to go home with a questionnaire. We'll want to get one back from every job classification, and it will ask them to include any duties that aren't included in their current job description, as well as some just general comments. Task four, when all of those come back, I'll review those, as well as the job description, probably the most onerous part of the process, because there are so many, and I know you have a lot of job classifications. After I've reviewed those and taken my notes, we schedule interviews with the department heads, most of which bring some of their supervisors to the interview process. We go over all the questionnaires, we do reality checks, we make sure that the department head is concurring with what we're looking at here. If we have questions about particular jobs that aren't answered, or there's too much conflict between what we're hearing up top and down below, I'll go in and interview individual employees as well, to get the answers. The idea here, again, twofold. One, to understand the jobs, two, to be inclusive enough to make sure that we're getting all of the information and we're allowing some input from virtually everyone that's going to be affected by this study. Task six on here, as I mentioned, getting a thorough understanding of each job. And lastly, in task seven, coming back and reviewing the results with your county administrator to make sure that there aren't some things that have been missed, or to discuss maybe issue areas that we found. The other thing that I would want to discuss with Mike is, are there any classifications that we want to combine, or anything we want to eliminate? You're going to be living with this thing for about ten years going into the future, so you want to get it right. And that's what a lot of the meetings with administration will be geared toward. Page seven, phase two, market analysis. As I mentioned, there may be more than one market that we want to look at. Where she recruits for a secretary, she's probably going to tell me Greater Jackson. It's fine that we know what a secretary's making in St. Clair County, that's helpful, but we really want to know what a secretary's making in Jackson. If I were to try to recruit for the gentleman that was up here before me, I'm not going to be looking in Jackson exclusively. I might look at the city of Jackson, I'm not sure about organizationally, for someone high in the public works area, but I'm going to be looking statewide. So we're talking about two different labor markets here, and we want to make sure we capture both. So in doing this study, we have a primary grouping of counties, and in order to select those, we look at what's been used in the past, what's been used, if there's been an arbitration, I don't know if there has. I present data on taxable valuation, population, those types of things, so that we have some parameters to work in. And we select typically about ten counties to use as market comps, maybe twelve, whatever works out to be really the best number. Secondly, we look at the local labor market. You don't have a road commission, so we wouldn't look there. You do have a public school, and certainly we have the city of Jackson right across the street, which is going to yield a lot of market comparables. I have a ton of data on a general area from American Society of Employers, or the Bureau of Labor Statistics, or others. So we figure out what that local labor market is as well, that we want to survey for select jobs, so we have to figure out what those jobs are as well. That's the stuff that I'll be working on with Mike. And my sense is, if this goes, as it usually goes with counties, that the board will also want some input in at least blessing the market comparables that are used, as well as understanding the rationale that was used to select them. So task eight and nine are really concerned with deciding who we're going to survey, where task 10 then comes down to the positions that we're going to survey. And if we're looking at the positions, what I suggested in the proposal is a hundred minimum. That gives us about half, and that gives us a very good benchmark. If they're selected from current grades, top to bottom, we'll have what we need to have a very good market representation. When those positions are selected and determined, I'll put the survey together. The survey is a custom survey. Every one of the jobs will be described in several sentences, so we get something that the respondent can read and get some idea of what we're looking at here. Again, the idea of an apple and an apple, or an orange and an orange. Similarly, an employee benefit survey, we have our standard one, I'll talk with Mike, we'll make sure that there aren't things that you want represented that aren't in our survey. The idea here, again, is to get an overview of total compensation. We review all the surveys with you before they go out. They go out, my staff and I then tabulate everything that comes in. We set up the market schedules for Jackson County. So at the end of phase two, we have all of the market data that we will need for this process. Page eight is phase three, and the two things we need here, one, the market data, secondly, our understanding of all the jobs. Phase three, we put together the pay grade structure. We do something called point factor analysis to determine the pay grades and where positions slot in those pay grades. That's called job evaluation, and that is something that you probably, maybe some of you are, if you're in human resources, but most of you aren't familiar with. What we do is take all of the jobs and line them up from top to bottom, really in any order. We then have a plan which has a number of factors, and those are usually eight to ten different factors. One factor, for example, is education. What level of education is required for a job? We assign a number of points for different levels of education. If the job requires a high school education, it might get a hundred points. If it's a bachelor's degree, it might get two hundred, on down the line. Every job will get ranked based on the education factor. Another factor is years of experience. How many years of experience is required to take the job? Similarly, top to bottom. Supervision, does the job supervise anyone? If the position has responsibility as a supervisor, a certain number of points are assigned. Technology, similarly, do you use a little or do you use a lot? We go through ten different factors, or eight to ten, and we come up with a total for each job. If we look at the sum total for all the jobs, and I usually, for counties, use two hundred as the cut point, we can cut different grades based on the results of all those factors. Essentially, we've compared every job to every other job in creating the grade structure. So what we're doing is ensuring some level of internal equity, that one job, in terms of job worth, has been rated against all the other jobs. So that's how we create the grade structure. We then use the salary data to assign salary ranges to each one of the grades. We then use the salary data to assign salary ranges to each one of the grades. So when we're done with this process, we have a pay grade structure. As I mentioned, that's really the centerpiece of this process. Other things that we'll do are to put together the employee benefit schedules, as I mentioned in the narrative. But what we'll want to do primarily is to take this pay grade structure and to start talking to you and the county administrator about how we're going to implement this. What do we want to do with it now that we have it? And that will probably be different for different groups. We have some union groups, we have administrative groups. What should the ranges look like? How should it be implemented? We do all the cost analysis then to give the options and to show what it would cost. For example, if we had all of the administrative employees, and we decided arbitrarily to implement, because we don't have a union contract to slow the process down, what would it cost us if we moved everyone to the next step in a new system? What would it cost us if we were to handle all of the green circles, those positions that show up outside of our pay range? There's a lot of different factors that go into implementing a pay system, and all of those need to be costed out. And that would be our objective in working with you, to make sense of this data. In page nine, presuming that we get to phase four and we have a finished pay grade structure, as I mentioned, what we will do is put the whole report together, developed as a system. There will be cost analysis, there will be the job evaluation plan, the job evaluation results. Virtually everything, the survey results, everything that was developed during the study is put in the final report, really assembled as a step-by-step process for not only understanding what we've done, but also using it going forward. Later, if the county wants to reclassify a position, or there's a new position that is brought into the organization, this report, this system can be used to follow the same process and the same procedure that we went through to classify that position, using the same analysis, using the same procedures. The final report itself, I'll present to the Board of Commissioners or committee, whichever you prefer, provide instruction to Joni and to Mike, and how to use this pay system, and how to use the point factor analysis. And lastly, just assure that there's a total satisfaction with everything that we do. So page eight, our objectives then, in finishing this project up for you, assure that the pay system is fully defensible. Not everyone is going to be happy with the results, but what we always strive for is that everyone feels that the process was thorough and fair. Because you will end up certainly with winners and losers. Some people are going to come out high, some people are going to come out low. There's nothing you can do about it in terms of making everyone happy, but what you can do is satisfy them in terms of the process. What we really try to emphasize is implementing these with the least amount of organizational disruption. If this report is put together in a sloppy manner, or the report and the process weren't properly conceived, you're going to have unhappy people. And if you have that, you're going to have organizational disharmony. And if you have that, you're all going to hate me. So the idea here is to do it right, and to make sure that everyone's questions can be answered, and that everyone understands and is able to review a work product that answers any concerns they might have. As I mentioned, understand the county administration knows how to use this thing going forward, so it can be a tool rather than a standalone. And lastly, ensure that there is professional support going forward if it's needed. So just to conclude on that, there's a project in the works here that if it's consummated, if it's completed, will give you something that you can use to rationalize your pay system for hopefully the next 10 years going forward. Page 11, project timing. This is about a four-month project at minimum, possibly five months, depending on how deliberate the client is usually. We can get through them in four. I did Livingston in four, I think the gentleman mentioned St. Joseph. I did St. Joseph in four. Others go five. Sometimes I'm doing Osceola County right now, we're working on six, and they're quite happy. They're not, they prefer to be slow. So it's, a lot of it comes down to budgetary considerations, and when you want something in place or contract negotiations, whatever your particular situation is. This lays out step by step what I just talked about, and typically how long it takes. So just for your purview, if you care to look at this on your own time. Page 12, fees. Our fees have not changed for some time. We charge $400 per classification to do this study. So what Mike will want to do is to multiply that 400 by the number of classifications that you have. This isn't a cheap process. This is a very time-intensive and thorough look at compensation. Fortunately, it's not something you do every year. Expenses are limited to mileage at the IRS rate from Brighton to here. We don't typically charge expenses other than mileage for any job within 150 miles of home base. No meals, no lodging, none of that stuff. So whatever you arrive at in terms of the number of classifications, that's pretty much going to be your bottom-line cost on this. Now I've listed on page 13 onward, a number of references that, as I mentioned, I think Mike's called a couple, but just to give you a sense of what we do for others, excuse me, as I mentioned, Osceola County is one hopefully, I hope to finish this month. And Livingston is just completed. Eaton County was completed in 2014, St. Joseph County in 2013. We're just finishing Oakland Community College. Don't ask me why, but we do all the community colleges. And I'm just starting a project for the state of Michigan, doing their reoccurring statewide survey wages and benefits. We do that every three to four years. I've listed a number of other counties on here, and please feel free to call anyone that you might know, and get any feedback that you think might be helpful. And with that, I'll stop and take any questions you might have.
My question is for the administrator more so, and I might have heard this and forgot, but did we put this up for bid? Okay, did you mention that at the beginning? All right.
It's in the document.
All right, thanks.
A couple of things to follow up since Commissioner Alal is not here. Out of respect for him, just to follow up on his thought. So if the compensation study is requested for the elected officials, minus the Board of Commission, per his request, an additional contract would be needed? Because this is not for that, is what I heard him to say.
No, you wouldn't need it. You would just use the same formula, only add six positions or five.
That could be included in this contract. Okay, so a separate one is not needed.
Price per person.
Okay. Second of all, what is the timeframe for this four-plus-month project, when you would be able to start?
That's the ugly part. We're so busy, as I told Mike, I wrote in a proposal, we can't start until late fall if we work for you.
Which, in all honesty, is not a real problem. We just finished all our labor contracts, so we're tied in for our labor contracts for three years. So it's not like we would make wholesale change to labor. It would be more the non-union employees that would be directly affected, most immediately.
If that's the case, then you're in better shape with a fall, late fall start, because we do the survey after the first of the year, when everybody's adjusted their salaries. We would get you more accurate data.
And we just, obviously, the contract started this January, so there's been one adjustment already.
All right. Finally, the memo on board docs that Joni submitted, I'd like to reference Roman numeral one under background and letter G. It states, "Updated compensation information will assist in the recruitment of employees, especially positions that have experienced high turnover rates, and those that have been difficult to recruit for." Just like to bring, as all of us that have been on the board for many years now, I quickly jotted down, "In addition to hiring a new administrator, we have hired a new finance director, health department, JDOT director, IT and HR." We are in the process of, that is a significantly high turnover of management-level people within our county. And if this is something that needs to be done in order to secure stability for our county administration, I definitely see value in that.
I was just taking a step further. I certainly, I got it, two minutes. I certainly agree with what Commissioner Alexander said, but obviously, this is also, and I know it's already been said, but I'll say this to our administrator, this will cover every position in Jackson County, whether it's our administrative assistants, whether this is, let's say, our JDOT drivers. I mean, this will cover what compensation every county employee, as far as where they work, it'll cover all that, correct?
Every classification. So every employee has a classification, and we're looking to do them all, which, you know, does obviously drive up the cost, but we believe it's the appropriate thing to do.
How about just for the fun of it, we do county commissioners. Not that we want to raise, because we don't, but at least we could find out what we're worth. Maybe, you know, maybe more than the $3 an hour we get now.
Can I make a suggestion? I just did that study early in 2014 for Ottawa County, and I will be glad to send you the results. And that's an awful lot of large counties in there. But I'll be glad to do it if you'd like it done. But if you feel it would save you...
Send it to me. Thanks.
Just curious, Mr. Overton, if you know exactly how many classifications there are?
Yeah, there's, well, there's a little more than 200.
My estimate is about 220, and that would include the six elected officials.
So two...
Okay, okay. All right, so that's, okay. And then I guess my follow-up question would be, seeing that we already have our labor contracts set for three years, I understand that this covers everybody in the county, every employee in the county. Is this something that could be considered for the 2016 budget, or do you think that this is something that needs to be done in this year?
No, I think... No, we had, originally, when we first started speaking of this and thinking about this, ideally, we would have had it done prior to the settlement of these union contracts. But the timing didn't work out that that was really doable. However, given the, I was just at MAC last week, and more and more counties are stepping in up to do this. In fact, as it is, we're waiting six months just to have a window where he can do it. And I would tell you, there's not a whole lot of firms that do this, definitely not at the level that Mark provides. So I would rather go ahead and move forward and do it, as opposed to delay, because very well, bottom line is, they'll book up his schedule, and then we may very well find ourselves in the same situation, trying to make decisions before, rush before union contracts are terminated. And on top of that, the non-union people, which there's a lot of, we promised them as well that we would go ahead and move forward on this. Okay. Thank you, Mark.
You're welcome. It was nice to see you all. Appreciate your hospitality. Okay, next up, we have, we've jumped around a bit here, but moving on to other business. I don't believe there is any other business to be brought forward. Move on to second phase, public comment. Any public comment? There seems to be no other public comment. Commissioner comment? Any commissioners with comment? Okay. Commissioner Lightmore, please.
I just want to remind everybody that we went on sale on the 23rd, or 27th for Gabriel Iglesias for the fair. It's going to be the Tuesday night of the fair. And we're only selling 4,000 tickets to that event, so if you want a ticket, to get them soon. Thanks.
I'd like to give one comment. We have people, I know we're going through the county solid waste plan in Jackson County right now, and recycling has been a topic. And as most of you know, we have built a recycle sorting and transfer station facility at Modern Waste Systems in Napoleon. The numbers I had been mentioning to people was from calendar 2013, of 1,400,000 pounds of recycled product that was diverted from landfill and sold into the recycle market. Since our last meeting, I have accumulated our numbers for calendar year 2014. 2014, Modern Waste Systems, my employees, who I have to give all the credit to, removed 6,100,000 pounds of product that were diverted from landfill to recycle processing facilities. So it's a remarkable gain. And as some of you know, we have finished up our second building, which is larger than the first. We did the 6,100,000 pounds, we're waiting for state licensing. So I expect another large bump in recycle commodities that are diverted from the waste stream again next year. Just for your information, if you have people talking to you about what's going on with recycling, it is alive and well. Thank you. Any other commissioner comments? Meeting adjourned. Thank you.